The, uh... Uh, no, cut it on. The first couple of items are usual. Space needs and bond issue. And if you were at the Finance Committee meeting last week, you got a little taste of where we're looking at going with the bond issue. It's a work in progress. But we had some bond lawyers over to talk to us about a couple of things in terms of the mechanics of it, the do's and don'ts of it, and I think we have some direction going forward. One of the important elements of this, though, is gonna be what we do in terms of our work on what we need to put in the bond issue, what's gonna be maybe separate from the bond issue. And just to bring everybody up to speed, this is essentially a public safety bond issue. So something that's not specifically public safety. Mayor may not end up with a bond issue, but we, at that point, said, well, okay, how much space are we talking about? How much does that cost? And so, Jerry, I think you and the folks in your office have honed that down a little bit. And so, if everyone has received the handout, I'll pass it off to Jerry and we'll just kinda walk through that a little bit.
Well, what we did was, there were a lot of questions about the total cost of the bond, construction, purchasing equipment, etc. So we tried to break it down. If you go across in the spreadsheet, you know, construction cost and equipment cost is thirty-five point three. Then the square footage is for each divisions that we assume are going to be a pending later decision. Then we put in the number for, what we thought was the correct number, for radio replacement for corrections and sheriff, two point seven million. And then we put in, we had a number here, seven million for corrections for the old side. Infrastructure renovation, this, the old side is ninety-three seventy-six. So, this is the total, this time, the total bond cost at forty-five million. In between last week's financing meeting today, we met with an architect with Dr. Fox all to kinda drill down a little further into the problems with the infrastructure corrections, which we clearly put in the public safety gap. Because there may be a day that those cells need it. And we can't be caught without funds to rent it. So, also, if you flip it over last time, there's a lot of discussion about square footages and where would people, their existing locations, and whether we own it or lease it. So I tried to break that down. And then if you go all the way through, it's the usual departments we've been discussing for months. 911, Treasurers, DMV, which is a part of the Treasurers, but it's a state department. And John might have an update on that, possibly. Environmental Services, we've always talked about that. We brought in Emergency Management from down here at the Civic Center up to the Fitz. It's also Fitz in the category of public safety. And then it breaks down the shared space for the different conference rooms, lunchrooms. So we don't duplicate the share in that building with all these departments. So there's not a lot of duplication. Because everybody wants their own conference room. But it works out so well when you build and develop a nice one and you share it. And then you, the people in that building, it's like Karen, where's you?
Here.
We scheduled her somewhere.
You know, it's scheduled through the Commissioner's office for this, this room here. I think it works well. So at the end of the day, the remaining expansion is a total of thirteen thousand five hundred seventy-three point three. So, that's kind of an update of some of the discussions from last time. And John, I didn't know if you were able to meet with the state?
Yes. We met with the state. We met with the state and we can't divulge all of their plans because they don't even know what they are at this point. But what they're looking at is, instead of having space in all ninety-three counties, they're looking at going to more of a super center concept, which would mean, in Douglas County's case, for example, they would not be at four facilities, but maybe one or two. And I'm thinking potentially one. And that facility then would be much more massive than their current facilities. And even more massive than what we're talking about at the Fitzgerald Hall. The reality is, I don't think that's enough space there for them. The question becomes, where could they go? And what they're looking at is potentially having each county have to do an RFP to propose something to them based on the population and things like that. That's their thoughts right now. So the Gerald home in terms of size doesn't work unless you build something, a freestanding building for them on that property. I gave them some time to think about what they want to do and we probably could have more of an update for you next week. But the reality is, I think that's the way they're going to go. They got the enabling legislation this year to be able to have their services based on population and based on number of customers and things like that in the various counties. Because some of the really small counties, they are basically, today, putting a person there. And they get one-tenth of a person in terms of usage for that individual. So they're looking to do super centers and bring more of their staff to places like Douglas, Lancaster, and Sarpy County. That still has to be approved by the legislature in terms of their budgets and all of those types of things. So it's a ways off. But I think we can make a decision for them, or they can make a decision for theirself in terms of the Fitzgerald Hall pretty quickly if there's not more space available in that facility for them.
John, maybe it would be good if, between now and next week, when you get with them...
Sure. I'll talk to him this week, yeah.
That you could get him to give you a more precise, doesn't have to be spot-on, but a more precise square footage need.
Sure. I think what we talked about would be at least double, maybe more. Because what they're looking at is more like twenty windows, that type of thing, at one location. So it becomes a super center versus five or ten, or five to six of the locations they have now.
So if we could put a square footage approximate number on that by next week, that'd help us going forward.
Absolutely.
I wanna thank you for coming. We really appreciate elected officials coming. And you could stick around a little bit. We're having a report from the clerk's office on their strategic plan. I think I talked to you about the treasurer's office presenting with the, with the jury maybe on the same issue. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner, can I just throw in a couple of clarifications real quick?
Sure.
The, on the, on the list, the two point seven million for replacement of radios for corrections and sheriffs is part of the fifteen million. So it should be more like forty-three than forty-five.
Give me a couple minutes. What about on the, based on our meeting yesterday, what about...
Well, I haven't gotten, I'll, that's the next one.
Oh, good.
Gotta keep up with me here.
So what's the number, Patrick?
So it should be about forty-three instead of forty-five. Because this two point seven is part of the fifteen. It's not an addition to it. So it should be thirty-five point three and seven. The other issue is that yesterday, Joe and I met with Steve Curtis, the City Finance Director, and Marty Bealik, the Deputy, what's he called?
Chief.
Chief of Staff for the mayor. And what we worked out pursuant to what was discussed at last week's Finance Committee meeting was that they would accept paying eighty-five percent of the additional five staffing members at 911. And in turn, we would agree to bear the cost of the, of the bond issue totally for the equipment, that the fire station alerting, which was the two million, and the eight hundred thousand for the upgrade to the police's radio software for encryption and data. So that's good news. We got that issue, I think, resolved. And, um, and then, was there one other thing?
But doesn't that, then that bottom two million go back in?
Yes, that's just what I was gonna say.
Well, no, not, so then the, then they say, okay, then we say assumptions made that the City of Omaha will pay for compatible fire equipment by grant funds in the amount of approximately two million, which is really two point nine, which is not part of it. Remember, we talked the last part of the meeting and I said, you understand now that that part in gray is the, that they got with the grant. That's not part of it. Because they got a grant for two point nine million.
But they didn't, they didn't say they got the grant yet.
Yes, they did. They said, he said, if we didn't get it, then, you know, that lady isn't, if we're gonna have to, that lady's, you know, gonna lose her job, basically, is what he said.
Well, I think they're confident, but I don't think...
They're, they're...
They don't, they haven't actually got it.
They said, they said that, here's what they said. They said, they haven't gotten the actual letter yet, but they've pretty much got it. They're confident that they have it, that they're very confident that it should not be part of the bond issue. So, I mean, I guess there's always that chance that they could come back to us and say, we didn't get it. And they're gonna have, if that happens, it's gonna have to be done soon. Because we're not including this part of the bond issue.
So bottom line is, in this package, that would take that number off the forty-five million?
Well, the forty-five million, yeah, you take the two point seven, that's a different issue. The two point seven was a replacement for radios. That was already figured into the fifteen. The two point, the two million at the very bottom, which is really two point nine million, that was not factored in to begin with. So it's really forty-three million. About forty-three million.
All right. The balance of the, of the package, as you see, includes a variety of, I guess you'd say, non-public safety items considering the Treasurers. And we had a conversation with the Treasurer about whether or not they need to go in here immediately. The idea would be that we do the building to kind of a vanilla finish for whatever future needs we do. And we front load the public safety components, which would be 9/11, the emergency services, the corrections component, and the replacement of radios. So that the bulk of the package stays about the same. But the, the finish out, the build-out for, say, the Treasurer's Office or Environmental Services might be at a, at a future date. If we did that, Jerry, would that appreciably affect the build-out cost, the construction cost? If we just finished, you know, the bulk of the building to the vanilla box finish and we did the public safety to final finish, the components for 9/11 and emergency management?
Well, a couple things. The lease that underneath the maple expires in 2018. So this was all kind of developed, coincided with passing of the bond, getting in the design, going out for bid, getting in the construction. So we could all get in there. Now, I may be wrong, and I know we had a nice discussion of finance, but I don't think, and Jeff, you could maybe comment on, from another viewpoint, but I don't think we're trying to deceive anybody about who else is going in there, as far as, you know, what the taxpayers would think. It's pretty much public safety. Now, when you develop a building, that's fine. I don't know how you stop and say, cut it here. Because when you do the building, you're gonna do the HVA CE. You're gonna do the whole building. Now, if you wanna carve out a couple of divisions and do the vanilla thing, that will bring the construction cost down. But is that correct?
Well, that's, you know, a kind of a little bit of a separate question. We haven't crossed that bridge yet. But you heard and we all heard, you know, with some question about, if we're marketing this as a public safety bond, is there anything that's not public safety that can go in bond? I tend to agree with you. It's overwhelmingly public safety. So if we put a couple of items in there, we can't... The school bond was overwhelmingly for upgrading classrooms and stuff. But they did some other things that were not related to schools in the school bond. So I don't think it's a bright line. But my question, my question was, if we were just to take the 911 and emergency management and put them in there as we planned in the original package and not finish out the Treasurer and Environmental Services space completely in this process, would that really mark, you know, be a big impact on that thirty-five point three million number?
I mean, sure, I mean, it'll come down some because you're not building separate offices for you to do in the counters
Yeah, right.
and the whole thing. But I, I'm just curious of your, if you understand my question.
Yeah, and, you know, if, if there's an issue with what you have to put in the language of the bond issue, you know, where you're spending the money, in an accurate description.
Yeah.
I, I think that's important. But I, I think, like Jerry said, I think you see some efficiencies. What I see here relative to what I remember last time, it looks like there's more utilization space here. Last time, I thought there was a lot more unused space on the second floor of Environmental Services.
I think you're right.
I'm not sure what increased, but, and, and that was our objection last time, was there was a lot of work being done.
Was it neutral?
Well, sort of, yeah.
No.
But a lot of unused space. And it's like your closet or your garage at your house. If you aren't using it efficiently pretty soon, you can't use it.
Well, and I can't predict, but you've all been around long enough to know that if that thing gets developed and people utilize that facility on that campus, I have a feeling, all of a sudden, we're gonna have tons of requests to go into that remaining space.
Oh, you're absolutely right. I mean, it's the build 'em, build it and they will come, or renovate it and they will come, absolutely. I don't have any problem with, you know, labeling this a public safety and future space needs bond issue at all. I think we could market that perfectly fine. But I'm, I'm just going into that because the numbers here, for a lot of different reasons, are gonna become more and more specific as we go forward. And so a breakout of that would be helpful going forward. Not today, but maybe by next month, we can have some idea. Joe, you got a question?
My question's a comment from a financing point, that, you know, here in a bond, we have a source of financing to complete the whole building. If we pull those out, then all of a sudden, they're probably not ever gonna be funded by a bond again. So they have to be funded in the operating budget as capital. And as we all know, when we go through that operating budget, trying to find money for capital is always a real challenge. So, you know, if you got the opportunity here and you got synergies to make it more efficient and do it all at one time, and you have a financing source, to me, that would seem, you would have to have awfully compelling reasons not to do it that way.
I think you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, and, and we've heard from other folks that if you're doing a property, it makes no sense to do half of a roof or half of a plumbing or half of an electrical. But that leads to what I've said before, and I'll keep saying it. This is in lieu of a property tax increase. I am opposed to a property tax increase. So if we're gonna do this, we do it in the bond issue, as far as I'm concerned, and not, as you indicated, our only other option, which is essentially a property tax increase. So, that's where we're at on that. I know that we have folks from affected departments here, 911. Would you like to add anything to our discussion because we're gonna move on?
Just however we can support with the marketing piece within our prescribed bounds, I think so.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I, I just after that, I'm not completely sold that we have to finish out everything here and now. I mean, when we built the jail, we added a couple extra mods that we could not finish out at that time. Future space that we were able then, when we needed it, to move into relatively inexpensively. I look at Lincoln Lancaster, their building commission, when they put up a new building, they build a whole empty floor. And while it's in use now, and they knew it would be in time. But it's a whole lot cheaper to come back and finish out than to add another floor.
And, and that's a good point. And we talked about this before. So I checked particularly on the corrections part of that. And what you're talking about is, is kind of where I was going in the earlier discussions. It was finished out to a vanilla box.
Right.
You know, if we don't do this, you know, completely, counters and everything for the Treasurer's Office and everything, we're talking, finish the whole building to a vanilla box finish. That's what they did at Corrections, that's what they did at Lancaster County. So that's what we're talking about.
Right.
What Jerry was saying is, and the number that we're trying to get to, maybe for next month, was, what's the difference? You know, if we don't put counters in, if you take this room and it's just the walls, the floor and the ceiling, everything else is lawn, what's the difference in the cost there? So, you're right, but we, I think, are on board for, do the building. So that if and when we have to move folks in, and I think inevitably will, that we're not, you know, doing an arm and a leg out of general funds.
My, my other question is gonna be on the radios and I, I would like to just talk to Jenny sometime about it. Because I know the fire departments have recently got the grants for new radios, at least the rural fire departments. And I need to know who needs what in terms of equipment. I don't wanna put in a sum that we don't need, but I wanna make sure that everybody has the equipment they need when, at the end of the day.
And that's part of this two point nine million that the, that the city got for the fire, which includes rural, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else?
After your question, I'd kind of be sure this sheet.
Put it up.
Yeah, this is just, this is just what I was talking about that we've gone over before the Finance Committee. It's just the numbers that, when I talked about the fire equipment numbers that were in gray. The two million for the fire equipment radios and nine million, or nine hundred thousand for the rural fire equipment radios is the two point nine million that was taken out of the bond issue. So the rural fire equipment is included in that grant that the city can afford again.
Right. Okay.
And, um, can we share copies of this with folks?
Yeah, we have. We did last time. We, we had the Finance Committee, we did. So everybody's already seen it.
Thank you. Let me try one more thing. If we do the entire building, we go out for, we're gonna get a pretty good number per square foot. If we start to carve it out, deduct space, that number, it's gonna be a large number, but it's probably not gonna be to our satisfaction because it didn't come out. They, they, they look at it differently. When they bid, they're looking at all kinds of subcontractors. And they, they get those subs, they get, they get bids, and people are looking for work. And the thing about our building and the time of year they will be, they'll be indoors. They, they gotta make. I mean, when the weather gets, they're already indoors. They're not out, up in the air with steel and, you know, total new construction. So, and then one other point, you know, a real important factor in this, in this whole concept, is the infrastructure that's there on the campus for the sheriff now, 911. And then the rain goes around the campus, the fiber of the rain. That's a couple million dollars. So, I know, you know, there's people that have said, you should go somewhere else. No, we go here.
We got some other stakeholders in the room on this. Emergency management, do you have anything to add, Rick Papano?
Well, the fact that, I guess people realize that we're in constant communication with the Sheriff's Department and I've been on throughout the weeks, anyway, especially during storms. But probably the known component is dependency on Environmental Services. Regardless, Environmental Services plays a huge component in our preparation of planning for disasters and great management, several other topics. So I just question, oh, that there is, that's an attraction to us, is the fact that Environmental Services...
Well, that's interesting. I hadn't known that. Tell me about that. How does that work?
Well, when it comes to natural disasters, we have a huge burden that gets put on the land and time pressures and everything else. So it's a preparation plan with Environmental Services that helps make it efficient.
So that would be enhanced by having you guys nearby?
Yeah, I thought Environmental Services could be in the amount out there as well, basically, that when they find themselves attracted to that.
Right. Yeah, I, I, but I didn't know this tie-in. I mean, we're trying to find as many public safety tie-ins as we can, okay? So in our discussion in the Finance Committee, we literally had to, you know, ask, like, Corrections, you consider yourself public safety? Well, of course they do. 9/11, you consider yourself public safety? Well, of course they do. You consider yourself public safety? I think so. But the, the public safety apps of Environmental Services, you know, is important to know. Because essentially, the lion's share of this is public safety apps. And so if you have some public safety apps that would be, you know, playing into this, we wanna know about it. And so, thank you for that.
We have many public safety apps. We consider natural disasters. You have wastewater, you have overflow of fluids, you know, the large amount of trash, and all sorts of...
Well, all of the, all of the things related to planning and zoning, building permits and inspection are driven by public health and safety. That, that is a mandate that comes right from state statute and federal statute and all of that. So, so that's, that's not a stretch at all. Because that's why we do building permits and that's why we do inspections and all that follow-up. We do most of the stormwater-related stuff based on our permit, which is driven by the Clean Water Act, which is to protect public health and safety in nautical, not nautical waters, but waters that are used by everyone. So water quality is a big issue. That is a public safety issue. You know, just from getting away from public safety a little bit, I mean, from an efficiency standpoint, we can more efficiently serve the public that we serve by being at that location. We eliminate an hour of drive time and other stuff. And so that makes us more efficient to provide those public safety aspects.
That's good enough. It might be helpful in putting this package together if we could get, you know, maybe, I don't know what you would call it.
Vision...
I hate to say vision statement, but something on paper that would emphasize the public safety apps of each component. I mean, this is gonna be really easy for 9/11 and for Corrections. But, you know, for you guys, if you could put something down and maybe bring it to us next month, that would show, you know, kind of enhance what you're telling us today, the public safety applications of your work, that would be great. And, you know, I, I totally agree. One of my first experiences in county government was in nineteen sixty-four, when my dad took me in a Jeep during a flood to Rolston, which was essentially an island that night. And we rode around, this is before any games were put on the patio. We rode around, and that's essentially kind of where they got the idea to start the whole, what turned into the lakes that we have behind the dams now. So, there are huge public safety, they're just not apparent. And we need to make them apparent. So, thanks for that. I appreciate your input. And try to bring us something next month. Try to bring us something next month, doesn't have to be more than, like I said, a one-pager of, here's the public safety stuff that we do, because it's gonna become important when we're putting together the final bond issue. Do you have anything else? Do you have anything else?
You could add reef control into that because one of the aspects of reef control is, is control of nuisance vegetation, which harbors vermin and, you know, disease vectors, things like that as well. So you can make that connection as well.
Okay. So that's everybody unless anybody has any final things. The sheriff have any input on this component?
I don't have time for that.
There you go. And unless anybody else from our shop has anything to add?
Well, let me just be very brief. The treasurer's office was asked to be part of this particular bond issue. We are looking to be good partners, not looking to create any issues for the rest of this bond. So we will look at public safety because I had some thoughts running through my mind right now in terms of the Department of Motor Vehicles and some of the things we do when you look at public safety. But the other part of that is we're willing to partner in the way that works for the county. So I'll just say that.
Thanks. And I would imagine with your background and Tim's background, you could probably help us out as sure, the important apps that would fall into your bailiwick. But please be sensitive to that. We're not saying that this isn't, you know, gonna go the way it is here. It's just that we wanna enhance the public safety.
Sure. And I get that. We're, we're willing to partner and all we would want is to look at what those timelines are and everything because then we've gotta work with Jerry on having a location in northwest Douglas County.
I'll leave you with this because one of the salient points that one of the bond lawyers brought up last time, who has considerable experience with marketing bond issues was, you have a lot of things in a bond issue. OPS had half a billion dollars worth of things in a bond issue, all over the place, that don't market a lot of things. Market one thing. Pick something out that is, you know, emblematic of the overall bond issue and market that one thing. So I'm thinking about that and over the weekend we go to a movie and we watch a trailer, low and behold, what's coming out this summer, like Ghostbusters, whatever number it is. And the tagline for Ghostbusters is, who are you gonna call? Who are you gonna call? Which is the tagline for 9/11. I mean, we're looking at the public safety applications as a conveyor belt. And the first part of that conveyor belt is, somebody picks up the phone and calls 9/11 and that starts everything that ends up eventually in corrections. So the things that are in between 9/11 and corrections are all on the same conveyor belt. They feed in, emergency stuff, environmental stuff, all feed into this same long stream of, of public safety concerns. But it begins with, who are you gonna call? And we now have an opportunity to get state-of-the-art, who are you gonna call technology at the beginning of that conveyor belt. So if you don't watch it, last week's segment of, last week, tonight, is that the name of it? John Oliver's program on HBO.
This week.
Had about a 10-minute segment on the chaos of 9/11 systems nationally. There's something like 5,000 9/11 systems nationally. A lot of them can't talk to each other, a lot of them have archaic technology and it's scandalous because, you know, when I call, I want somebody there ASAP. I mean, I'm not calling because, well, a lot of people do. They said some incredibly high number of calls were butt dials. But those aside, you know, people are needing help. So who are you gonna call, I think, is something that we could market to a lot of people and we have some legs at the poles when we, when we get around to marketing this. Plus, it will coincide with the release of the latest Ghostbusters pre-publicity. Well, thanks, everybody. That's the bond issues, space needs for today. I think every month when we do this, we're getting a little closer to the final product, which is gonna have to come out, you know, this summer. So about the same time as Ghostbusters will be premiering. Speaking of premieres, you who have been at these before know that we take strategic planning seriously. We have copies of our latest working document on the county strategic plan for everyone's consideration. A lot of you have seen this before. In past meetings, we've had dot com give us their view, we've had environmental services give it, give us their view. And today, we are lucky enough to have the first of the, I think everybody at this stage has probably seen them before. The first of the elected officials gonna give us their view and we're happy to have county clerk Dan Ash here. It's essential that the elected officials help us with this. We can't get it done without your help. And so, Dan, thanks for taking the, the lead and John, thanks for agreeing to do it next month. This has gotta be a living document. This can't be like past initiatives where we do something like this, it sits in a drawer until the next time we do something like this. So the reason we put it on the agenda every month is so that we can have a living document with department by department, elected official by elected official input and that will move the strategic plan forward in a real way. So Dan, thanks for being here and what have you got?
You bet. All right. So I didn't bring any hard copies, but if anybody wanted a copy of the PowerPoint, I could certainly email it to you later. So it's the strategic plan for Douglas County Clerk Comptroller. And start off with our mission statement. And our mission statement is provide services in the most courteous, efficient, accountable manner and to promote open access to all county government public records. And we have that mission statement because of the things we do and what our responsibilities are. As far as providing courteous service, you know, we have a lot of people from the public walking in our office every day, mainly for marriage licenses, but we also issue locksmith licenses and then for establishments outside of the, of any city limits and we, we do the tobacco and liquor license. And so it's important for us that we're courteous to be when we come in and we're efficient. We get a lot of requests for certified copies of marriage licenses and our goal is to get it out and we get it in the mail. Our goal is to get it out that day to the person, mail it back to them that day. As far as, you know, the open, you know, open access to public records, we were the official record keeper for the county board. We have, you know, payroll records, county financial records, we put together the CAFR. So those are, you know, important things that we look after. And, you know, with the CAFR, if we have something that's not correct, you know, we're gonna be held accountable by that, not by the auditors and public, but we gotta, you know, we, we take the first step before it gets to them. If we see something wrong, you know, we wanna, we wanna take care of it before it gets to that point. And then as far as like being not just courteous to the citizens, but also to people that we work with, you know, we provide a lot of help with payroll, if people have questions with payroll-related questions, Oracle support, you know, we wanna make sure that we're, you know, we're team players and helping everybody out when they, when they ask us questions. So we got some goals for this calendar year and I'll go through some of them. The, some we're working on with Sherry Alvin and dot com and Joe's aware of it too, we're doing a web application for their submission of budgets from all the political subdivisions. So everybody in the county, they have to submit their budget to the county clerk's office. And generally now, they just, they just mail them in, hard copies. We scan them in and put them on the web, but, and we know not everyone's gonna use this, but we're hoping most people will use this online submission. They'll have to scan in their budget document and send it to us, but basically it'll be, create like a one-pager that will give us the essential stuff we need when it comes to setting the tax rates for all political subdivisions. It'd have like the real and personal property tax required for non-bond purposes, personal property tax required for bonds, and then the proposed, total proposed tax request and then the proposed tax rate. It's just kind of like a, just a little, and there might be some more there too, but basically just the essential stuff we need. And then when they submit it, the goal is that whoever, when they submit it, they're gonna get an email in return telling them what they submitted to us. So it helps us. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of entities out there, so it's hard to, it's easy to make a mistake, you know, because there's so many. So this kinda helps eliminate that. I mean, generally, believe it or not, I think generally we've done pretty well not making mistakes, but to me, it's, it's, it's inevitable at some point, there's just so many, you know? And so this will help stop that from happening. That's the hope anyway.
Dan, on that, when you say from all political subdivisions, it's every political subdivision in Douglas County?
Correct. That's school districts, SIDs, there's a ton of SIDs, as you know.
And the city of Omaha?
And the city of Omaha, yep.
Okay. So it's a one-stop shop if you wanna find out what anybody's spending on anything?
Well, what their, what their budget is, yeah.
Right.
Right. So I'm sorry, what was your question? Yes.
Yeah, there's about 185, 190 political subdivisions in Douglas County.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, the Meditech, EHR, that's, you know, I, I'll be honest, I can't speak to that other than I just know it's a huge project with the Health Center and our Oracle Functional Leads and we're helping out with that and that's a goal of ours to make sure things run okay, obviously, but, you know, but try to get most of it implemented this year. Review capital asset accounting. We have, we hired an accountant recently to replace one of our retiring accountants and she actually has a lot of experience with fixed assets, capital assets and, maybe we were kinda reviewing it anyway, but really looking forward to having her on board. She can give us some ideas that maybe we haven't thought of before. ACH payments for vendors. So instead of issuing checks, I think we're, we're gonna initially start with some of the larger vendors, you know, OPBD, First National Bank, start with them, Seattle Echo is unexpanded, everybody else. And then the last thing I'm gonna touch on is the, this is a, something the commissioners, in particular Commissioner Kraft has been pushing for, this kind of expense dashboard. It's VJ Bedal from dot com who is an amazing resource that the city of Omaha, the city and the county are lucky to have. He's with him and his people at dot com and working on this. It's kinda like OpenGov, but the Oracle Business Intelligence Enterprise Edition or OBIEE, so you might hear that acronym a lot, that's what that stands for. They, they kinda have, they have the capability to do what OpenGov does, that's broken down by account codes. And so recently we had a request to, you know, one of the commissioners wanted to know, had a list of account codes they were interested in and, I mean, we're always happy to put that stuff together, but this dashboard would make, would, would make that available. I mean, it's, it's available now, this would just make it a lot easier to, to, to get to find and put together for people.
Are we gonna have the dashboard open to the public?
Yes, we will, yep. I know, speaking of VJ Bedal is actually having a meeting this week on Thursday. I wanna say two, maybe. I think, I know he had invited Commissioner Kraft, but certainly any other, I mean, you know, any other commissioners are welcome to, well, I guess.
Three.
Three or less. Because it's not, it's, but yeah, anyway, I believe it's two o'clock on Thursday if anyone was interested to see what the, what we have put together so far. I think he's pretty close to me and Doug. Goals beyond 2016, just work for dot com. We, we do, we still have a lot of payroll, paper reports that we provide to the offices. So we'd like to work to eliminate that. I mean, I, I don't think it's, it's just one of those ca, I mean, just over time it adds up. It's not a huge cost every week or anything, but, you know, if we can eliminate it, why not? So we're gonna work, work with that. The implementation of, what I, what I mean by the audit, by implementation of automated financial closing process, it's just to help with the, when we are putting together the audit, the comprehensive annual financial report. We just wanna help make the things run a little smoother. A lot of the accountants and not just people in our office, but Joe and Sherry Alvin, they gotta, they have to put a lot of work into this. But just internally our end, what we can do to maybe make things a little more efficient for everybody. Comprehensive review of accounts payable process. We're gonna have a, you know, a new finance division administrator soon and how we go about, or I guess the process of how we go about paying, paying claims, you know, we just wanna look at and see if we can, you know, I don't have any specifics really as far as what we put, but that's the point, is to look at it and see if we can come up with a plan to maybe make things go quicker because sometimes just by the sheer volume of bills that need to be paid, you know, we get backed up. So we wanna see how we can, if there's anything we can do to, I mean, we're looking at it right now, but certainly we're gonna have a new set of eyes come in here and next two or three months and we'll seek their input as well. And we have file bound and for the training of the tools and resources the clerk's office provides, you know, the, how we search for board records, we use file bound and, of course, there's a lot of, our Oracle Functional Leads, you know, show people how to use different applications within Oracle. And we just wanna help make sure that we're training people to, to use them the right way or the best way. That can always be ongoing. Then we have some of the position descriptions in the clerk's office are, you know, they're getting to the point now where it's kind of the cycle where it's kind of time to review them again. We started doing that with a few of the positions and we'll, but it's not something we'll be able to finish for all the positions this year. Some have to keep going to, to 2017 and after that. Before I get into questions, I just, we talked about space needs. I mean, we're, we're fine where we're at, but we're willing to relocate within the Civic Center that helps out the, you know, overall spaces of the county. I guess really the only thing off limits for us would be sea level and, well, there's, there is, well, cer-
C-A-N-C.
Certainly, I mean, yeah, certainly there's some subsidies to that. None of us wanna be down there, but honestly, we can't. We have people that come into public, that come to our office every day for marriage licenses. I don't, we can't sit them down. Yeah. I know, we've got witnesses already, you know, yeah. But at least when we go in the hallway, we can see some sunlight through the doors. But, yeah, just because of the, of the, you know, volume of citizens we have coming to our office related for marriage licenses, I don't think we would wanna be on sea level.
It's intentional that you're by the door.
Yeah.
For a reason.
So that's all I have. I'll entertain any questions, Gavin.
Thanks, Dan. That's great.
Very good.
If you could give us, just circulate the board members anyhow, a hard copy of that of these as well.
Sure.
Anybody got anything? Marx? Clark?
Yeah.
I got a couple. On your Oracle support, is everybody in the county on board with Oracle now or are we still training people to use Oracle?
Well, no, I think everyone's, departments are all on it, it's just.
Yeah, that's been how many years now?
Yeah.
Ten, twelve, thirteen.
It's been a while. We're finally getting there, yeah.
New implements, yeah.
Well, I mean, there, I guess there's things that maybe haven't been, maybe haven't been used before that we'd like to show people. I mean, certainly it'd be, it would help us if everyone would use, as far as like the, finding, putting together the financial statement, there's certain things that if people use Oracle to account for things, it would help us out, but, but I think it'd be a benefit to the departments themselves and I think it's maybe a matter of making sure they, it's like, you know, people are used to certain things. They're coming, I, I'm guilty of that too, you know, you wanna use what you, what you know.
Sure.
But if we could be of help of how to train people and show them how to use it, then that's, that's how everybody, I think.
Well, I just, you know, when I came in here five years ago and I looked, I came from another organization that used Oracle, I was kinda surprised at how Oracle wasn't really being properly, properly, fully utilized here. And my impression is what happened is that we bought the system and whatever, but we didn't really invest the time and effort and money in doing a lot of the training that we should've. And I think slowly we're getting there and we've improved the relationship with dot com and VJ and whatever, so we're getting better at it, but it, it's been a long process for us.
Um, there, in the strategic planning document that, that we're working on, uh, there's, uh, one of our goals is to study and recommend a plan for an enhanced budgeting process. And I noticed a lot of the things that you have there play into that. Going forward, I mean, we really like to work with you and your office on, on enhancing our budget process, making it as transparent and readable as, as possible. Uh, so, I mean, I'm just putting that out there as kind of a ongoing goal along with the implementation of Oracle at as many levels as possible that, you know, maybe go hand in hand for, for your office to help us, uh, get to, get to the place where we can have the best, most transparent budgeting process possible.
A couple of years ago, we purchased Hyperion, which is the Oracle budgeting system. So, that's fully integrated into the Oracle ERP system. And again, Hyperion is a big operating system. Essentially, they're just for budgeting. And so, again, it's just utilizing it more fully, but, you know, we, the system and all sorts of capabilities are there. It's just, again, expanding and, and trying to maximize utilization of the Hyperion planning system, but at least the infrastructure is there to use.
Maybe that's a takeaway, you know, between you and Joe and the, and the fiscal people. Uh, at some future date, we come back and have a session just on that, uh, component to see. Kathleen?
Just, just to, I don't know how much, you've all are aware of it, I know Joe is, how much of an asset Vijay Bedal is to us. For example, on some of those payroll reports, um, the company wanted to charge us forty thousand dollars to write them and Vijay talked them down to zero dollars. Because once they can produce those reports, governments have to report by fund and that's not a pub, a public sector or private sector issue at all. So, he does things like that, but one of the most amazing things is he's up, he's one of five people that are up for an Amazon, uh, award this year for the city-county projects of moving things onto the cloud. And one of those examples is Hyperion, moving Hyperion from our hoster, Sierra Cedar, to Amazon cloud at a fraction of the cost. So, he's really, he's just kind of an amazing asset to all of us, so.
Right.
Just so you know, we, I mean, we, we do try to do things for zero dollars.
Well, that is true. And it kind of brings me to my last question because, uh, clerk's office has kind of really set a, a high bar for us in terms of succession planning. Uh, and a good example of that is, uh, the chief deputy Kathleen Hall, who has been with the county for many years and is taking retirement well-earned, uh, this summer and will miss you, Kathleen. But, you know, the clerk's office has a process of, I guess you would call it, parallel training for succession in key positions and Kathleen's successor, Sherry, who joins us today, has been on board for some time, actually returned, I guess, uh, to be on board for some time so that-
Came back from the dark side.
She lived in this small town out in western Douglas County for a while.
And that was city, that's what I meant.
Well, she went out of card.
But it is one of our, uh, strategic goals is effective succession planning and I would just commend you and your office and your excellent staff.
Well, and likewise, uh, the, working with us on our budget request last year helped us achieve that goal, so, thank you guys.
That was heads up, uh, to put that in place and I think that's a model that we could, we could look forward to wider applications upcoming. So, thank you, Kathleen. Thank you for your many years of good service.
It's been an honor.
Thanks, everybody, for participating. We'll see you next month. Thanks.